Obviously, right after this meeting, we will have a reception. And it's decorated very nicely. We want to thank all of the ladies and members who put that together. And we look forward to an endgame. But all parties that were a participant for it to make that happen. I'd like to call this a word, July 26, 2022, regular meeting in tomorrow's evening. If you will stand for the ladies and members, follow along on this side.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got a lively group, I dated that. Brother, that's pretty nice. All right, approval of the July 12 regular meeting minutes, approval of the July 12 work session minutes, and approval of the July 12 executive session minutes. You had the four years, do I hear a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded and in discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
I'm making a main motion to correct that the meeting minutes just stayed. The council can't put out the motion and not record it. So I send a file with take away.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion favors, going back to the original motion.
I'm going to make the second amendment motion.
Really?
To counsel can make a correct that counsel trying to make a motion, not a main motion on the last record of the meeting minutes.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion favors, going back to the original motion.
I'm making the third amendment motion. That the motion made after the executive meeting is not recorded.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion favors, going back to the original motion. Are you done, Miss Trent? All those in favor say aye, Ms. Knight?
This is the original?
Yes, it is.
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
No.
Ms. Tran?
May?
I vote yes, motion passed. Presentation, Major Kyo. For those who didn't know, it looks like Kyo is retired.
Many of you were able to join us on Friday for a celebration of Major Kyo, Major Kyo's distinguished career. Twenty-two years as a police officer in the city of Morrow, twenty-six years as a police officer in Clayton County is an incredible legacy to leave. Just from the stories that were told on Friday from people across two and a half decades, of all of their interactions and positive influence that Kyo had on them tells us what a tremendous legacy he leaves behind. These are big shoes to fill, and we're very, very sad to see him go. And so, among other things, we presented him a number of gifts from his coworkers and colleagues. And one from the department that we want to present or re-present here. It says, "Major Kyo, thank you for your 26 years of loyal and dedicated service to the Morrow Police Department and to the city of Morrow. We, your coworkers, friends, and family of the Morrow Police Department, present this to you as a symbol of our lifelong friendship. You will always have a home here."
I hired Kyo in 1999. Gotta go back a little bit, but so does he. And, you know, kind of the irony is, Kyo has a lot of friends. He's a police officer, they're not supposed to have friends. But we want to issue him a proclamation today. And it says, "Whereas Major Kyo," and I am not going to pronounce the last name, "joined the City of Morrow Police Department in 1999, and he served as Uniform Patrol Division Sergeant from 2003 until 2007 as a field training officer from 2003 to 2011, was the departmental field training coordinator between 2006 and 2007. And where Kyo was promoted to lieutenant in Uniform Patrol Division in 2007, he promoted to major over the Uniform Patrol Division in 2021. He received his Bachelor of Law degree from the University in Laos in 1998, and served as Vice President of the Asian American Peace Officers of Georgia, and he has been a Tai Chi practitioner since 2016." I got to watch him this weekend, that hurt. Kyo, as he is known in the community and his law enforcement family, he has devoted his life to service to others. He is a man who garners respect from all who encounter him. His kindness, humility, and great strength of character have contributed measurable to the city of Morrow. And where I, John Apple, Mayor of the City of Morrow, join with all members of the community and recognize him through the years of service as the shining example of Major Kyo, he will be missed, and we are wish a wonderful retirement." And all of those, because they'll be out there, so we don't want to hog his time. But we do want to make him actually give a speech.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Council, City Mayor, and Sylvia, all the friends, coworkers, everybody, friends, brothers, sisters, everybody that support and help. Go miss you guys, and I still will be hanging out. Sometimes you seek a title, senior, tell us, stay away with me. Because everybody will guide you for me, and I think I asked all the I have. For my love.
Major Kyo.
Ms. Knight.
Major Kyo.
Yes, sir.
Huh? What did you say?
I just want to say thank you. You have been an amazing example of what community policing and community engagement really truly is. It's from the heart, it's a calling. And I appreciate that you have stretched your hand out to so many first cases, ethnicities, languages. You have a nodding, such a wonderful example. And I truly appreciate you and who you are as a person, because it flows to who you are as a policeman, certainly. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Tran.
We all know that Major Kyo is the first Asian American that majored in the city of Morrow in Clayton County. And like Councilwoman I said, man, thank you for providing exceptional service. You see the diversity of the audience tonight. People in the community show up to celebrate your retirement. Thank you for your service, sir.
Looks like they, everybody really happy to see you go. They're all smiling. Just kidding. We all love you. I'd like to say thanks to you for anything that you've done for our community. Another thing I want to point out is, we here, here one of those Asian men stand up and get involved and be involved in the community, serving as a policeman. And culturally, Asian people culturally, we, you know, we police and government is different to us culturally, is a different thing, you know, to a normal people. So we, we try to stay on this side of the aisle. We don't want to have anything to do with the government, with the police, you know. But in America, we are American, Asian American, and we need to learn to step up, learn and serve to participate as an American. And I really appreciate you for demonstrating a good example for all the young Asian people. Encourage them, you have that many people behind you. I mean, of course, he's serving everybody, he helping everyone, American. But I'm just going to point out and going to encourage the young, our Asian people to look at him, he's just an example for everybody. You need to step up and do your part, this is America, and you are American. Step up, do your part, because this is your land. So, thank you for doing that, sir. Appreciate it.
Kyo?
Yes, ma'am.
I have to say that I've known a lot of police officers, but none like you. You blend into the community, you've made the community much better because of your presence. Your spirit is something that we can all relate to. And my voice is sounding weird because I don't want to go so. But thank you so much for your dedicated and committed service to the city. And thank you for bringing on such a program as Tai Chi to this community, this city, and others, that you've given us something that we call uncle. Thank you so much.
Now, one of the things about Kyo, and y'all know very well, but have you ever seen somebody who smiles more real than that? I mean, it shows through when he talks to you and he smiles, you know he means it, he's happy to see you. And, you know, that kind of presentation means a lot, irrespective of whether he speaks perfectly and means it not. But we've had a wonderful time, and we're looking forward to, you know, greeting you again out front after this meeting for a reception.
Yeah, a lot of Vietnamese. A lot of Vietnamese people think he is Vietnamese or American. But then he is Vietnamese. I'm going to pretend Kyo was Vietnamese.
Thank you, Kyo.
May I just mention, to Councilman Qua's point, we are not delighted to see him go. And as soon as he comes back from Laos, we are going to put him back to work as a reserve police officer. I don't know if he knows that yet, but we're putting him back to work as soon as he gets back. So I don't know, he will either stay gone forever or you'll see him back. And that creates an opening in the police department. So on Saturday, August 6th, at 10:00 a.m., right here at City Hall, a lot of police hiring processes take three, four, six months to get hired. We are committing to the folks who want to come and be a part of our police department. We'll get them hired in one day. All right, that's their commitment to us, and we'll do all the backend stuff without them here or inconvenience in their schedules. So Saturday, August 6th, we will do a hiring fair here, both for City of Morrow Police and Clayton 911. So anybody interested in being a 911 dispatcher can also come and apply that day. Thank you all very much.
The next one is just as enjoyable. We tried really hard to kind of keep it low-key so that we could surprise them. She ultimately surprised me. And was a delight in a very short period of time. You know, but that being said, you know, we dedicated a portion of a path system, a walkway, if you will, the newer section that was just done. There's some benches out there on the other side of that bridge to Sylvia and Jack Reddick, and Jack, of course, is her son, who basically crawl around floors here. A young single mom comes in and makes us a load of cash and turns it into a tremendous path system. So we want formally notified that, and I am going to ask for an official vote from the City Council, that we have that dedication for that scenic route listed as the Sylvia and Jack Reddick scenic walkway. Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Qua? Ms. Tran?
Aye.
And we have a proclamation for you. We could not lift up the bench and drag it in.
Well, John, I thought you could do anything.
Well, we're calling the Public Works Department to be able to set that up. A proclamation, Sylvia and Jack Reddick scenic walkway. Sylvia Reddick began her career in the city of Morrow in November of 2012 as a communication officer in the city's 911. There are famous stories that I may have to ask all those.
The worst six months of my life, details. Everybody else is too.
Don't have a heart attack on Sylvia's mind. Sylvia's career quickly advanced, issued murderman positions of grand administrator. And then soon she performed the duties and held the position of city clerk. In April 2018, she accepted the position of the greatest responsibility she became the city manager. During her tenure in this position, she also served as the city's economic development director. While Sylvia was devoting herself in her time with the city, she was also performing the task of masterfully raising her son, Jack. Is he back from London? He's going to miss this. Jack Reddick served as the youngest member of the city of Morrow family. In his younger years, Jack slept many a night on the cot in City Hall due to his mom not being allowed to go home. Due to the exceptional work ethic and dedication of his mom. He endeared himself to the staff with his humor, intellect, and kind-hearted spirit. Whereas Sylvia Reddick's devotion and commitment to the city of Morrow continued to enhance the quality of life offered to Morrow citizens for many years to come. Now therefore, I, John Apple, Mayor of the City of Morrow, join all the members of this community and recognize the contributions and praiseworthy accomplishments of Sylvia Reddick. And to do hereby dedicate to her and her son, Jack, the Sylvia and Jack Reddick scenic walkway.
So, the only thing that, well, there's just nothing that could mean more to me than this. Because as John mentioned, in 20 years, I wanted my legacy to be something that the community would enjoy for many decades to come. And so, yes, Jack slept on the floor, and not on Jack, but the Baker Boys, anytime my baby sat down, or his cousins, I have pictures of all them lined up in the hallway because I had deadlines to meet and I wasn't going to miss them. And so, I appreciate this so much from this council. I appreciate it from the fellow employees that I grew up with in this environment, and of course, from the community. I do encourage you all to use the path, it is an amazing asset here. When you're on it, you're going to have these moments where you think, where am I? How far away is the city, is the interstate? And that's what we always wanted to create, was an opportunity to enjoy the nature. I remember Tethro, when I remember when I had Jack when he was young, you asked Essie, "Is Sylvia from New York?" And she was like, "No, why?" She was like, "The girl walks everywhere." Believe it or not, I did walk everywhere back then. And so I wanted to build something that I could walk my son on comfortably and safely, which is why we built the Hundred Paths to get under 54. So anyway, it was just, I, Morrow rocks, I owe everything to the city. I love this city, I still live in this city. I intend to live in this city for many years to come. So thanks to everybody, thanks to the Mayor Council, this means great to me.
Please, any comments from the City Council, Ms. Knight? No, Sylvia just go ahead, they'll go right on the business.
Sylvia, we greatly appreciate everything that you were able to accomplish during your tenure here, especially as City Manager. You were a very impactful visionary. I appreciated our moments and sessions of just imagining what the city could be. And I greatly appreciate you, the fact is also, Lisa and Stu are.
Ms. Tran.
Well, Sylvia, thank you so much for your service. Thank you all indeed.
Mr. Qua?
But I know Sylvia for a number of years. And I've learned, I've heard, and a lot of things you've dedicated, you've done a lot of things, and how we, we had to say, to give a city where it is now. And I truly, I really appreciate it, but thank you guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Dean?
Just get hurt.
Sylvia, I think the pathway and the dedication to your son, Jack, is a small token. I realize that what you sacrifice for the city cannot be put on a plaque and on a bench. And I just want you to know that your service for the city and what you taught me as a council member and what you taught me about the city and caused me to really appreciate the journey that we have here in Clayton County. So, thank you. I love you.
Love you, Karen.
Cheers.
All right, Ms. Reddick. And when the city party call? Not bad. Good job.
Back at you, John.
Watch out. All right, new business, approval to determine the decision regarding the subdivision of property on Platte City 520, South Police Street. It has been recommended for approval by the planning and zoning board as well as the city planning staff. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Still move.
Do I hear a second? Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye. Can we open to discussing?
Sir?
No.
So there was a difference between the city and county background. And several suggestions and information provided since none of us, attorney, I would want to ask the counsel to wait until we get the legal advice from the attorney.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion favors, back to the original.
It wasn't the motion earlier, this was the discussion.
So a suggestion. Are you finished?
Yes, and I will.
All those in favor say aye.
I'm going to make a main motion. I'm making a main motion to table this item until we get the legal advice.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion favors, going back to the original motion. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
May?
Motion carries. Approval of IT recommendation for FOMETC to replace the two small digital signs located on Highway I-75 ramps on Highway 54 in the amount of $67,528.64, and for the mayor to execute the contract or any other related documents. You had it before you, which you explained earlier by the IT staff. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Still move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Can we open to discussing?
Sir?
So the discussion is that, there's, again, none of the council member or the attorney, and we are not quite sure how to, the procedure of the existing procedure. The informal written calls were established back in October, and in October, now it's August. And also, the coast wasn't, we did not have invited the owner to come for owning the coast. So for that matter, we should get the city attorney to give us an advice. And if we had the city attorney sitting here in the meeting, none of this would have been an issue. A lot of the city, or maybe the city also have city attorney sitting in the meeting with us, just in case if we have a quick legal question, the attorney could have give us advice, and the council would have been informed and ready to vote. And as a real time that the council was planned by the state something that we should, we could have hired a non-licensed plumber to do the plumbing job of the community garden. And the council had accidentally voted for that, but they don't have, they didn't have authority to do so. And I don't want us to be in the same situation again. Since we are not clear about legal aspect, the attorney would be the best way to be informed to vote under the authority that the council had. the council had.
Was that a motion, or is it a counter?
It's what the chairman and I would, chairman for the discussion, and I would like to hear the input from my council.
Motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
The mayor, in that case, if we don't have any responding for the chairman, I'm going to make a motion. My first motion is that I table this item until we get the clear legal advice from the city attorney.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion fails, going back to the original motion.
I'm making a motion. My second motion for this motion is that to have the following language written right in the meeting minutes for there. Request for legal advice of selecting the method for this project and not provided.
Do I hear a second? Hearing none, motion fails, back to the original motion. All those in favor say aye. Ms. Knight?
Aye.
Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Mr. Qua?
Aye.
Ms. Tran?
Knight.
All right. We have comments from the citizens?
I just want to say one thing that I forgot to say when I was standing up, Kyo.
Oh my gosh, I forgot something.
So a lot of people talk about how nice you are, which you are, but let's don't miss that as an officer, when there was business to handle, he knew how to take care of it. And that.
I don't think he was giving a cop to you. Any other comments? Comments from the city council?
Let's get to the party.
Hearing none. You're welcome to attend the reception just outside these doors to thank Officer Kyo, as well as Ms. Reddick, as you see that, we do appreciate coming out, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, all the council have not had a chance to make comments.
Oh, we would like to make a comment, please.
Yes. For the two items that we voted tonight, dividing the plaque, as well as the LED monitor, though are good thing that we should have had. My concern is that the procedure to have this, since we don't have the legal advice from the attorney to be informed to vote, so. So just for the remark that, and I acknowledge that two, the two projects are good for the city, just the manner of the procedure.
I'm going to go to the other side a little bit. Some members of this council have significantly more experience than us, so when you get elected, you know, we have to kind of go through some trials and tribulations as we learn. It's just asking, saying what newly elected anyone. So it's part of the process, part of learning curve, no problems with that. So let's go to the horse.